This conference will now be recorded.
Wow, there you go. That's official, right, Teresa?
Official.
Tell you what, we will get started. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, anybody who signed on from the public. Looks like we got a couple of people out there. So with that, we'll get started with roll call.
Okay, Mayor Minney.
Here.
Brenneman. Keel. Monahan.
Here.
Glanzer.
Here.
Nelson. Nelson. Here.
Now, there you go. Here.
Okay, Jones.
Here.
Okay.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from 317, 2020?
So moved. Second. Second.
All right, we'll vote. Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Brenneman?
Yes.
Okay, also need a motion for the minutes from March 18, 2020, the equalization minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We'll vote. Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Stain.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right. And we've got no bills submitted for payment. So we'll take a moment for any public input on any non-agenda items. Anybody from the public out there that wants to hop on and give any, any input on non-agenda items?
Hey, Jeremy, it's Shannon Ward.
Hi, Shannon, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Would you want me to put this in about COVID stuff now, or is that at the end of the agenda?
Well, I tell you what, I think right now is probably a good time for you to speak. We, we do have a little bit of a COVID update discussion at the end. But, but I think this is a perfect platform for just some public comments on that.
Perfect. I'm just, I, short and brief, I don't know exactly what Hartford's going forth with as far as like a stay at home or a safer at home or something similar to what Sioux Falls has issued. My input public wise is just that what Mayor Ken Hankin has kind of continued to drive home is that we're so close to Sioux Falls that if we don't do something here, I just, I'm just concerned. And that's basically my input as somebody from the public.
Yeah, just one quick question while we're on that, Shannon. Anything specific that you? Specific?
I think the, the ability to gather. I know that there are a few places that are still open that are allowing dining in. That's my main concern is just, you know, that businesses, I think there might be a misunderstanding on some people's parts as to the 10-person rule. It's, and anyway, I think it's just the time being until we get ahead of this, I think that it would be in our best interest to do what a lot of other places have done and try to get in front of it.
All right, thank you. Now, thanks, Shannon. Any other comments from the council on that particular topic or questions for Shannon? Okay, awesome. Thank you. And thanks for joining us tonight, Shannon. Do we have any other public comments on any non-agenda items? All right, if not, we will move on to first reading of ordinance 685, which is in chapter 3.01 on nuisances. So Teresa, I'll let you speak to this.
Okay, well, this ordinance, we looked at a draft at our last meeting, as you recall. It would do amend our nuisance ordinances, basically three sections in there. One of them would just basically state that you can't throw grass into the streets. The second one would be you can't burn leaves within the city. Those have not, those sections have not been changed since last week. The section that we did update and had some discussions about was the finding for not mowing or not spraying your grass that are over eight inches in undeveloped properties. And so you can see the highlighted portion on this ordinance, but basically the draft had it where this was, would be an annual, any violation of this would be an annual fine. I took the wording of annual out there, out of it, I should say. So basically, if you do not comply with taking care of your nuisance weeds or your grasses over eight inches, if you're in violation of this, each time you're in violation, you could be subject to a fine. So it's per occurrence. So I took that wording out of there of annual, and then I added the very last sentence, just looking at our ordinance a little bit more, that basically references, besides of the fine, the city does have the ability, which we always have had, to either abate the nuisance, which means city go in there and take care of it ourselves and assess the property owner, the costs, or do civil action. And I'm just putting reference to those sections in this part of it. I didn't change those sections. They're always in there. I just thought, where we're talking about fines, it would be good to also add that not only fines you could be subject to, but abatement assessed against you or civil action. So those are the changes from the last time.
Jeremy, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I wonder, the way we have that worded now, it's defined as a parcel with no building or structure. Is there any way, or would it be easier in these new developments to tie it to the street being done? Just a thought.
My only question with that is, so what do you consider the street being done? Because usually there's a street and they do a portion of it when they plant so many lots, and then they continue it on and plant some more lots. And I guess you'd have to define.
Well, if the street was done and they platted it, then they'd have to mow those. What I would say. I don't know, maybe that doesn't make sense.
But didn't we talk about at the last meeting that? What about like, like the big developments at Mass? I kind of keep thinking that because that's got a lot of undeveloped area. There's a portion of it way out to the east that no street ever touches. So didn't we talk last meeting that we want that, if it's in city limits, we want that to be subject to this as well? Just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did. Yep.
Yeah, just a thought.
Teresa, I'm reading that it says second offense, not second and each additional offense. So if I'm interpreting this, it's 750 is the maximum fine I'll have because it's the first and the second offense. Your thoughts?
Well, so, and I see where you're going with this, but it says a violation. So if you have a violation, you have a fine for the first time we send you a letter, and maybe we should reword that offense. And then you have of 250, and then the second time we send you a letter, it's 500. So then let's say you take care of it, and then we get another complaint. Now you have a second violation. So I see how you're interpreting that, though. We could probably reword that. So it says 250 with the first letter for each violation and 500 for the second letter for each violation. Something like that would probably be clearer.
Yeah, that's what I think. Otherwise, I'm just not going to mow and pay $750.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think every subsequent violation should be 500. You throw the 250 out after the initial, every, from that point on, anytime you have to send a letter, it should be a $500 violation, would be my opinion.
If we do it that way, we can say violation, a violation of this would be subject to a fine of 250 for the first violation and $500 for each additional violation.
That sounds reasonable. Not reasonable necessarily if you're getting a fine, but it certainly would get my attention.
And does it spell out the timeframe you have to fix the problem? I don't know if I seen that.
Yeah, with any grasses or weeds, you get five days, and that's spelled later.
How does it work? How does it work with the grass in the street? Is that complaint only, or how is that going to be, how's that going to be enforced? Is that, is that opinion based, or is that complaint based, or what's the plan with that?
I think it'd be pretty much like any of our ordinances. If a complaint is generated, I mean, we definitely, you know, would follow up on the complaint. If it's a violation, proceed. But, you know, our code enforcer or staff or anybody, you know, could also have that lead way. If you have a, a problem, even if you don't get a complaint on it, if you have Joe Smith continually putting grass into the street, you know, time and time again, and becomes an issue, then we could just address it on our own. I think it gives us that ability to address it if there is a problem.
But the, the way I read it, it, it just says no grass. So, I mean, ultimately, wouldn't it come down to judgment? Is it, is it, you know, is a little bit of grass all right, or is a lot of grass? You know, I, that's, I just, I just don't know how you, I just don't know how you differentiate between, I don't know how we're going to enforce it.
I guess it's the same thing for any of that in that category. Maneuver, I mean, garbage is a pot bottle garbage, or you're gonna, you know, find somebody for that? Whether it's just one can that's thrown out, or, yeah, a lot of it's just come down to judgment or complaints.
I think a lot of that's going to come down to code enforcement and how they're handling that. I mean, just like when we have another law on the books. You know, was I speeding just a little bit, or was I speeding a lot? I mean, it's that the code enforcer is going to decide whether to issue at that point or not, just based on the nuisance. Do we have any motions to approve first reading with any adjustments?
Motion to approve first reading as presented.
We've got a motion. Mr. Nelson, I think you're on mute. I'm not sure what you're looking at there, but we got a motion for Mr. Keel. You have a second.
Second, and I'm going to ask that caller 01 or caller 02 turn their mic off so I can hear what you just said.
Motion to approve what the amendments as presented.
All right, so we got a motion, Mike Keel. Still have a second by Nelson.
This was for as it was presented, correct? So nothing about each additional offense?
Well, that's, that's what I was referring to with those amendments as we just discussed, I guess.
So 250 for the first, 500 for each additional?
Correct.
I want to verify that you've got your second there from Nelson.
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, any further discussion? Now we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones? Jones, you're on mute. There you go. Jones, no. Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion carries. Move to our hearing, 705 hearing on resolution 2020-6, the de-annexation of parcel 71116.
Make a motion to approve the de-annexation.
Second, Brenneman.
All right, we got our motion, a second. Any discussion?
I think I seen in the notes somewhere, we had made this promise when we got the easements. Is that correct, for Mickelson?
Yeah, so when we did the Mickelson Road project, that was part of our agreement with Leroy and Rose Stumpy that we would de-annex this parcel, basically in exchange for them selling us the portion we needed for the Mickelson Road project.
Okay.
All right. If nothing further, any other questions? We'll vote. Brenneman?
Brenneman, yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
All right. That carries. All right, we'll move down to reports. We've got Deputy Ryan with the Minnetonka County Sheriff's Department.
All right, can you guys hear me all right? Can you give me a thumbs up? You guys can hear me? First time from the back cave. So, okay, so a lot going on, of course, this month. We still managed to have 52 traffic stops. It's still a decrease of 31. 16 civil paper services of almost cut in half, decrease of 13, six warrant services, one abandoned vehicle, one aggravated assault. I'm not 100% sure why I put the ag assault on here. This, the two aggravated assaults actually were Humboldt call, the one where you may or may not have seen our entire SWAT team driving through Hartford and responding just outside of city limits to take care of business there. So that happened two days in a row. We also had 47 public assists, and essentially what we have public assists for is just us just checking in on businesses and on people. We had 47 this month. It's kind of, it's a new, new thing that I'm listing here. Seven follow-ups, eight suspicious vehicles, four suspicious people, nine disorderly subjects, two mental illnesses. Both of those ended up with those folks going in for mental holds, one traffic accidents, two gunshots. I honestly don't believe those ended up being verified gunshots. They were probably fireworks. Seven animal problems, two family disputes, three medical calls, three larcenies, four checkwall beans, three burglaries, and two burglar alarms. So the burglaries are, of course, to me are alarming, but almost, almost expected. Businesses are unoccupied. People are home. Less likely to have people burglarize homes when they know everybody's home. So for business owners who are out there, I implore them to get cameras and to get alarm systems. So total calls per service is 233 for the month, down 25 calls for an average of 7.77 per day.
Good, nice report. I know you guys have been busy. There's a lot, there's a lot going on and a lot coming up. Any questions for Deputy Ryan? All right, well, we appreciate everything you're doing. We know that, you know, we're coming into probably a stressful time with, with everything that's happening in our region and our area. So thank you in advance for, for all of that. We know there's a lot always happening. So thank you.
Thanks. So I'm probably going to stay on. I want to, I'm interested in the COVID discussion, so I'm just going to stay on and listen on, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thanks.
You bet. All right, we will move over to Mitch with the City Engineer reporter.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Yeah, oh yeah. Um, I did, report's short tonight. There's no action items that we had on the agenda. I'm in our office where we have a set of plans out to the city staff for the Oakville and Route intersection that they're reviewing. So we'll make updates to those, and we're patiently waiting for some of these easements to come back on the San Terry sewer extension project. So that's kind of what we've been doing the last couple of weeks. Take any questions if you guys have any.
No questions?
Is there one, Patrick DeGruy, is that it?
Patrick DeGruy has a question down in the lower right-hand corner.
Go ahead.
On the upper left on mine, Scott. Yeah, quick question that probably goes for both Mr. Mergan and Craig. So that new property that got put up between fifth and sixth, Craig, did you get back there to look at that dip that's going on? And then the other question is, I'm wondering, I might be speaking for the people on the, for the town, or the twin homes back there as well that butt up against it, but is that marsh back there going to get resolved anytime soon? Because that's really going to be a muddy mess back there and stuff. I realize we've been wet, don't get me wrong. But, you know, I just, it seems like every time they go back there, do anything, it just gets worse instead of better. I just, I just, I'm just curious what the future plan is for that, is all. I'm not trying to say we have to do something today or tomorrow. It's not yet, or complaining. I'm just curious, because we're, he has a kind of a neighborhood here, kind of wondering what that's all eventually going to become, if anything, I guess, other than just a bunch of weeds and cattails.
Yeah, I did get back there right after that next meeting or whatever we had last meeting. At that time, there were still some snow pushed up in that low spot, so I really couldn't tell what it was doing. It does look like there's some of that is draining the wrong way. I was going to get ahold of Mitch now and come on and take a look at that sometime.
Okay, and that's fine that it's doing that. My biggest concern is that you as a city don't have an issue there for that sewer and everything. I don't know if it's causing you problems or not, but, yeah, and clearly, I know when this law getting approved, I said they're going to push the snow straight off the end, and they guaranteed it wasn't going to happen, and clearly, the opposite happened. They just pushed it right up to the end, and it all drained our way. But, so, I don't know. That's a little frustrating. I know us as neighbors are a little frustrated about that, but it is what it is. I'm just more worried about that dip and how that's all going to clip there and everything. And then that marsh down below by that twin home, if there's actually going to be something done with that, or, you know, if it's going to be a water hole as it is now. So, yeah.
I guess I haven't been by there in a while, but I can trip up my list to go take a look at it.
Sure. Okay, thank you guys. I appreciate that.
I would say that when they come in there to get the dirt work all finished, that'd be the time that they'll finalize that and get that slew and stuff taken care of, because they still haven't seeded it or sodded it yet or anything like that. And then they also have to get that culvert out of there, that temporary culvert that they put in.
Okay, see, yeah, I didn't know what was, yeah, okay, thanks. Just, just looking for clarification. Greatly appreciate it.
All right, excellent. All right, anything else for Mitch? All right, thank you, Mitch.
Yep, no problem.
You bet. Move over to Craig with, you got a couple of action items and report?
Yeah, my report, I'm really not going to add anything. I did put the traffic tubes out on Western Avenue tonight, today, to get them out there just to see what, see what kind of traffic counts we're actually getting from all this people staying at home and stuff like that. I can tell you that if you want to get the traffic boosted up a little bit, just put an orange vest on and go stand out there for a little bit. It really starts to pick up. Otherwise, I have nothing else. My report, just some action items. First action item that I was on there, I believe, is the Magwater. It did go up four cents a gallon from what it was last year. It's still, I figure it's going to go up maybe 10 cents is what I figured for budget, so we will be below budget. And again, this is a same contractor we've used in quite a few years now, and he's the only one that actually has the lig that we use. It's three sap base. It comes out of Canada. So I'm looking for a motion to accept Bumblebee Gibson's price, move ahead.
Craig, just as per our discussion this afternoon, that is for two applications throughout the year. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did budget for two applications, so it'll be the same price for the fall as it is this spring, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. You good? You got everything you need there, Karen? All right, any other discussion?
Karen, could you make sure on the minutes that that is for two applications, not one for, for the, breathe these minutes and want to make sure that it's taken care of?
We'll do that.
Thank you.
As a point of clarification, I think what we're approving, though, is the, is the price per gallon. I think that we budgeted for two applications. I may be, I may be wrong on that, but what we're doing is proving the price. Is that correct, and who we're going with?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
All right, Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yes.
All right. All right, and you've got some updates on the repairs for the maintainer, too.
Yeah, so I went to RDO about two and a half weeks ago now and checked out the engine, see what really happened. Did find out the cap came loose on one of the rods, number four cylinder, and it actually busted the block. So crank was with a rod come loose or a cap come loose like that, would have took the crank out, too. So when they gave us the original quote, it was like 18,000 some, but you would have had, we would have had a rod in top of that. And then I also had some discussion with their bills that they were going to send to us, and I got them clarified and taken care of. So where we're at right now is we either need to put a used motor in this, put a remanufactured motor in it with a two-year warranty, try to trade it off as is. They figured we could probably get about 8,000, trading it off. So I'm kind of looking for some guidance from you guys and what you feel with it. We don't, we definitely don't need a new blade. We, we use it just enough that, that we need one, but not enough that we Um, but not enough that we need a expensive one. A new blade's about four hundred thousand. Um, I did get some prices from them today. They do have um. Quite a few that got around that eight thousand to eighty-five hundred hours on them, two thousand twelve's, thirteen's. They're running about eighty to ninety thousand. Like I said, otherwise we can re-put a remanufactured motor in this one here and run it for another four or five years maybe. I guarantee, you know, hopefully nothing else does go wrong with it. Um, even though if we, even if we go look for a used piece of equipment, we're still not guaranteed, we're not gonna have some issues with them. That's just the way equipment is. Like I said in my report, if we're something that we're thinking about running for a year, then getting rid of, then we might wanna consider the used motor. Although we, I was talking to Monahan earlier today and I reminded him of our champion motor grader we had. That uh, we stuck just shy of between fifty and sixty thousand into it, and then we finally got rid of it the next year. And we got forty-five hundred for it. I don't wanna get into a situation like that where we stick a lot of money into. You know, piece of equipment, whether it's worth. Twenty-five thousand, uh, I seen some on the, online for up to thirty-four to thirty-five thousand, you know, with low hours and stuff like that. In the same year, this is a ninety-six model, um, so it is twenty-four years old right now. So I guess I'm looking for some, some input from the council and the mayor on. What your guys' input is on it. Um, I'm kind of open for suggestions with it. I'd be fine putting a used motor and run it. Or put it in or looking at trying to try to find a trade or something, so. Kinda looking for input.
I, I have a question, Craig. If, if that thing was running good. Six months ago, what was that maintainer worth?
I s- when I looked at him, I seen him about the same on hours, anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-five to thirty-six asking price, whether they're getting it or not, you know, it's hard to say, so.
Yeah, and like Craig mentioned, I was talking to Craig today about the maintainer and uh. Cause I go back and forth on, on one hand. On one hand, I think. You put eighteen thousand dollar motor in it. But then like Craig brought up today, while you're there, you know, you. You put a clutch in it and while you're there, you do this and you know, it nickel and dimes you for another. You know, three or five thousand bucks. And, and I just got to thinking if. So best case scenario, we're gonna spend. More than half of what it's worth if it ran good. And I, and I personally, the more I thought about it, I don't think I'd do that with a car. You know, if, if I had a, if I had a twenty thousand dollar car, I'm not sure that I'd spend twelve thousand dollars on it. To put it back on the road, I'd, I think I'd just cut bait and move on, but. So that's kinda where I'm at. I think I'm ready to cut bait on it. Eight thousand or whatever they said they'd give us on trade and just look for something new or a later model blade, I guess, so.
How was everything else working on it before um, before this, Craig?
Um, you know, it is, like I said, it's a ninety-six grader. Um, the radio in it is just an aftermarket with aftermarket speakers hanging. Um, there's really no luxury in the cab in the winter time. If you get out in the. Out in the, like on uh Railroad Avenue or Mickelson, the wind's blowing, it's snowing, you do get snow coming in on you. Um, you know, it doesn't seal very good, but I mean, it still works, you know, we've been working with it. It's just, you know, it's twenty-some years old, it's seen some. Some life, so.
That's an old machine, yeah?
And if it feels something that we decide to go this route, uh, like I was telling Mark um earlier today, I said, actually. In August and budget time, I was thinking. Next couple of years, be looking at putting or asking for a different blade. Um, so if we decide to go that route. We'd have to put, run some equipment, find something, go out for bids on it. Um. And then also uh, it'd be one of those things that I'd be willing to not even look at a dump truck this year. Ask for budget money for next year for a, the dump truck, so it's not putting us in financial bind.
Brenneman, I think you, looked like you had a comment earlier, maybe a question. Do you have anything?
I would agree with my um. We gotta do something fairly quick. We can't mess around all summer waiting for one either.
Yeah, the town's been pretty good about letting us use their blade. I just don't wanna overextend the welcome with it, so.
All right, if the consensus is to take a trade and uh, see what they can, see what else they can find out there for you. What else do you need at this point, Craig? Just some, some direction there?
Yeah, I guess if that's the consensus to start maybe looking for a different blade, what I'll do is. First thing I'll do is I'll find out from counties, uh, other towns that have something that they might be getting rid of that we just buy direct. Um, which we might be able to get a pretty good deal, even though whether it's in Minnesota. So that'd be my first option is look around and see if I can find something that we can just buy from another uh agency. Then after that, it'd be a matter of uh demoing a couple pieces of equipment. Uh, putting specs together. And then. Um, have it, you spec it for a piece, the, use equipment's hard to bid, and so you need to find what you like. Put specs around that piece of equipment or better or newer or less hours. And then um, you might find something completely different that somebody's got alter that's better. I mean, it's just, it's hard to bid use equipment, but it's possible, so we've done it before.
All right, that sounds good. Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, yep, so if that's a consensus, I'll start looking for possibly a different piece of equipment and hopefully have some. Something lined up by the next meeting that we can start putting together, so.
Another question on. If, if we do buy a blade off a bid somewhere other than. Our, where's our blade, RDO or?
Right now, it's sitting at RDO right now, yeah.
So if, if we buy another piece of equipment somewhere else, is RDO still gonna buy ours broken or not?
Um, they, when they told me that that was valued at eight thousand, they said that that's what a scrapyard was gonna give them to them for parts.
Oh.
With the wing on it. Um, so I think we'd still be able to get that type of money or pretty dang close by selling it out ourselves.
Okay, all right.
Hey Craig, maybe I missed something, but uh, wasn't uh initially the fault on RDO?
Well, when I got to looking at it more, when I went down and actually looked at to see what was going on with it. There's, it's one of those things that um, it just happened to come loose when they had it. It could have very easily came loose when we were bringing it back to the shop that same day or that. When it first packed up, um, you would have a really hard time. Put the blame on them and saying that they were in care of it and that it came apart during their use. I don't think it ever went a court case with it. Um, just no one with a, breaking in with the cap come loose like that. If what it came loose, it was just gonna come loose.
All right, anything else for Craig?
Um, just some comments around the community about street sweeping, so that'd be that time of the year if people are on, on their bikes and walking. Everybody's kinda paying attention to that. Any updates on that?
Uh, Jess has been out um. Four or five days now in the last two weeks. He's always out uh yesterday all day. Um, he said he's got about a little over half the town done. And we probably hauled. Eight to ten dump truck loads of debris off so far. So he's been out at least four to five days that I know of. He's, he documents it all too, so it's all wrote down. What streets and.
I'll testify to that, because uh, he actually went down my street and uh, I was excited to see him, so I've seen him. All in the last two days for uh Travis, I've seen him out busting it all day long.
Spread the message.
All right. Good, good, all right, nothing else? Thank you, Craig. Um, all right, we will move on to Karen's report, finance officer report.
I don't really have anything to add to my report. I do have one action item. Um, on March thirtieth, the state passed legislation to postpone elections until June. So the board needs to set that date for June. There is a primary election with the county on June second. Um, we could have it with them, but it, we'd have to have our election board and they'd have to have their election board and there'd be two different ballots and. I think that would be a little confusing to everyone involved, voters and the election boards, so. I think we should pick one of the other four Tuesdays and there are no council or P and Z meeting on the twenty-third, so. I think that makes most sense and plus I think the later into June, the better, things maybe will hopefully. Be more settled down, we can hope anyway, so. Just need a motion to set that date.
And make a motion to set the election date for uh Tuesday, June twenty-third.
Second that.
All right, Tuesday the twenty-third? Looks okay here. Any other discussion?
I have a question, this is.
Oh, hold on a minute there, we've got two. Tell you what.
Levon, you go first.
We'll go to Levon.
So absentee ballots, are they able to, Karen, are they able to just continue to submit them until what date?
Up until the election, the day before the election, five PM, the day before, I believe is the cutoff. So yeah, we can just keep going like that, like we have been.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good question, yep.
Nelson. So you're officially stuck with me until then and, and is Brittany obligated at that point too?
Until I hear further, that's uh, yeah. For your calendar.
Okay, Monahan, you rotten SOB, you got it.
All right. We've got a motion in a second on the twenty-third, so.
I'll make it.
Um. Sorry, we've got discussion. All right, we're gonna vote, Nelson?
Can I abstain? No, yes.
All right, that's a yes. Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
When Nelson hit all three of them, I'm just a yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Any other discussion on Karen's report? All right, looks good. Let us know, Karen, if you ever, if you're starting to see anything from, from other municipalities or the rest of the state, I'm gonna be very curious to see what um. What sales tax dollars do this year.
Okay.
I mean, I'd say maybe a little early to tell, but I'm curious if there's, if anybody puts out any information that says. Hey, we expect it to be off by this percentage or anything. Um, it's always gonna be good for us to keep an eye on. What we had budgeted for that and everything along those lines, so.
Okay, yep, I will, I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, Karen. We'll move over to Teresa's report.
Um, just the main thing I wanted to point out on my report, I talked with Leah Johnson this week and. She wanted me to convey to the council that um. The Jamboree Committee is gonna meet um April twentieth of this month. There will be discussion about whether they're going to continue on with the event or if they're gonna cancel it, so. Um, she said she'll know more after that meeting. Um, you know, they hate to, hate to cancel such a, a good community event, but. At the same time, she says there's no way we're gonna put anybody in jeopardy either, so. Um, like I said, after that, I'm sure we'll have more information. As of now, they're continuing forward, but um, that may change April twentieth, so we'll keep you posted. Um, and everything else, um, basically no other change on my report. Um, we're moving ahead with um interviews. For the um Chamber and Economic Development Director position. Um, we'll have an update for you probably later on, an executive with that. And um, we're getting a lot of phone calls about free dump passes and we don't have any free dump passes, so, so that you know that. Sioux Falls. Is not giving out any free passes. They put a hold on that even to Sioux Falls residents, just cuz. Their numbers, they said triple when the passes go out and they're trying to keep as few people as possible coming to the. Landfill just for the contact wise. They are open, so I mean, you can go and, and pay to done something, but. They're not gonna give any free passes and, and if this passes and it later on, um, they, they could issue them later on, they said, but as of now, they're not. Um, and uh, we just closed this week on the lots for the elevator, so we have that all taken care of. That's about all I have.
Speaking of the elevator lots, Teresa, when, what's the timeframe for them getting their stuff off that?
We didn't put a timeframe in there, so. We own them, so I guess we could set whatever we want. Now they're on our lot.
Well, it's, it's something that we need to talk about or consider, so.
Yeah, we should probably have that discussion. Um, as far as I know, I don't know if Jesse had any conversations with them, but I, I have not heard any kind of. Timeframe or that we have discussed that at all with them, so. But. But yeah, they, their stuff is still sitting on our lot now.
I'm a little surprised to talk there.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Scott?
Uh, I'm sorry, I interrupted Jeremy, delay. Uh, so uh, is, that's not officially in HADF's hands right now, is it? I can't remember.
No, it's in the city's hands now. The city owns them at the present time, yep.
So are, is, is the HADF, even though Jesse's not there, able to market that piece of property as we speak?
Well, not officially. I mean, that's up to the council if you want them to out there marketing it. I mean, I, I, if you want to market, they can market it, it just, it can't change any hands until we, you know, officially. Turn it over to them.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for Teresa? Okay. All right, if not, we'll move on. Thank you, Teresa. All right, I'm gonna turn this over to Al. I believe Al and, and possibly Travis wanted to talk a little bit about, oh no, I'm sorry, hold on a minute. I'm, I'm one step ahead here. I'm gonna turn it over to Gabby actually for the chambers proposal. For additional funding, so with that, Gabby?
Hi, everyone. This is Gabby Hoing, President of the Hartford Chamber. And I had spoke at the last council meeting about maybe securing some additional funds to help with some of. The Je- Jesse's or the chamber director's responsibility in the absence of a director. And one of the big thing we wanna keep pushing forward is our communication to our chamber men- members, but also keep communication out there. To the public on what our businesses um are doing and how they can support the community. And provide services to the community, especially in this time with the economic downturn. We really wanna keep information out there. Um, and keep our chamber active. So we asked, we had kinda asked last time, you know, what you guys would need from us to. Maybe secure some additional funds and you asked for some proposals. I got a few quotes and one of them was from Andrea Van Essen. And she would mainly just be interested in doing our quarterly newsletter. For one newsletter to help us put that together, it would be twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. For her to write the content and put the newsletter um partially together. I also got a quote from Fresh Impact, who primarily does social media. Um, and now, let's see here, I, hopefully this got sent to you too. I had it up here. Okay, yep, Fresh Impact would mainly do our social media. They would, they could maintain our website and they could help us with some of um our. E-newsletters that we do to the chamber. Um, the social media piece of it would cost us anywhere between. Three hundred and forty-seven dollars to five hundred and forty-seven dollars. three hundred and forty seven dollars to five hundred and forty seven dollars a month. And then I think she was gonna do like thirty five bucks an hour for website maintenance. Yes, yep, thirty five bucks an hour. So then we also looked internally at our chamber and someone locally that could maybe help us with both the newsletter, social media. Our our internal communications, our e-newsletter, things like that. And Jessica Wendell from Growcock Ink and Thread would be willing to help us with everything we want. Um, and she would charge twenty bucks per hour. And we estimate that it would take someone, depending on the week and what we have going on, somewhere between five and ten hours a week to help us with our social media. So I kinda budgeted that out for at the extreme of eight weeks. Uh, we haven't made a an offer to a director yet. They may have to put in a notice, move here, things like that. It could take, I mean, I I think it's realistic to say that it may take eight weeks to get someone up on their feet. So I'm asking for sixteen hundred dollars to help with the outsourcing of some of the directors responsibilities. And I would like to go with Jessica Wendell. That was a lot of information. What were questions do I have?
Uh, why is it that you wanna go with Jessica?
Well, she's from Hartford. She's already part of the, her business is part of the chamber. She has a background in graphic design and she does all of Growcock's social media. She's just, she's just very familiar with the chamber and what we do and our members already. And she's very affordable.
That that makes complete sense because I wrote her name down wrong and that's what I was thinking also. So so I'm gonna support you on that Gabby, just so you know, and everyone else on this knows also.
Thank you.
Hey Gabby, just for clarification, when you're asking for sixteen hundred, is that just for the social media part of it? Or is that also including the quarterly chamber newsletter?
She would also help us with the newsletter, Jessica would. So we think that would cover her time for both the social media, the website and the newsletter.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Motion approved Jessica Growcock to be the, what is there with the terminology is interim Economic Development Assistant. I don't know what the word is. Not to exceed sixteen hundred dollars until a an Economic Development Director hired.
I think, okay, so we got a motion. Um, one of the one point of clarification, if we do end up hiring somebody, I don't think it makes this a moot point though. I mean, I I'm wondering about that Gabby and what your discussion is on there, but waiting for a second, I suppose we can have a discussion in the meantime, so. Never mind my comments. Do we have a second?
I'll second only for discussion.
All right, we got a second for discussion. Just wanna be clear on that piece of it, Mr. Nelson, just to be sure that we that you don't, that it doesn't inadvertently kill it if if we're right in the process to getting somebody up and running. Maybe that's your intention. I just wanna be sure.
So I would like clarification. Scott's motion sounded like that we would be hiring an interim C E D D. And I don't think that's what we're doing. I think we're just allocating sixteen hundred dollars to the chamber to help with some of those duties for them. Is that correct?
I'll make a substitute motion that we transfer sixteen hundred dollars so they can hire an assistant with development and whatever else Gabby said.
But it would just be for the chambers needs, just so we're clear. It's not for the economic development.
Just for the chamber, sixteen hundred dollars to the chamber so they can hire an assistant.
I second that motion. Scott, my only concern was how specific your motion was. And I don't wanna have to do this in two weeks if something falls through with the current plan. If we allocate those funds to the chamber, they can utilize those as they best see fit.
Makes sense. I understand.
All right, that looks.
Monthly or wanna get it out a little longer cuz realistically are we gonna have somebody in place up and running and able to run with the social media in sixty to ninety days?
I would hope so.
And the way I understand the motion right now, it's sixteen hundred dollars, which would be one month's worth of content.
I'm hoping that would cover us in two for two months.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, any other discussion?
I'm just gonna add that that Jamboree Days, if it does happen, which I'm kinda highly doubtful it will, but is highly, highly motivated on this social media. And if Jamboree Days does actually happen, uh, it is very contingent on Jessica's ability to get the word out.
That is true. And I don't, maybe this isn't, maybe I shouldn't bring this up now, but I will anyways, and you can tell me if I should not say anything further, but the carnival, we could not se- secure carnival for Jamboree Days, the weekend of Jamboree Days. There was no carnival available. So what we have proposed to Jamboree Days is that we do the carnival the weekend before and kind of extend Jamboree Days for an entire week. And if that is the case, if that, if this all goes through and we do the carnival the weekend before and then Jamboree Days, the third weekend, we'll need a lot of promotion. Um, I hadn't actually thought about that, so you just brought that up. Um, that that will take a lot of communication, letting people know that the carnival is the weekend before, Jamboree Days is still the third weekend. Yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't thought that far ahead.
All right, no, that's, those are good comments, as long as they're related to the to the motion. For the chamber there, so. Nope, that's good. It's it it fits, but I don't wanna get too far down our rabbit hole of talking about Jamboree Days. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, we'll vote. Monahan.
Just to clarify, Jeremy, I think it needs to be clarified that we're voting on the substitute motion.
That's, that's a good point. We are voting on the substitute motion. Say again, Monahan.
I'm a yes.
Yes, okay, Jones.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes.
Glanzer.
Abstain.
And Nelson.
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for joining us, Gabby.
Yeah, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have the H A D F with the Envision twenty 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 five capital campaign. I'm here to talk with us a little bit about the pledge amount.
Thank you, Mayor Manning. Is my microphone working? Okay, then. I'm online with Foundation President Justin Ike. We each have an action item, but I'll begin with a few remarks about the status of the Envision twenty twenty five campaign. Since my last report to the council, we have completed a program of work. And we have completed with the Board of the Foundation a campaign financial plan that is gonna get us to the two million dollar objective for funding the five-year campaign. Also, the N C D S Economic Strategy Strategy Center has provided an economic impact analysis that was part of your packet dated February twenty twenty that forecasts sixty million dollars in new output in the two-county M S A. Sixteen million dollars in fresh new income for a hundred fifty jobs created in Hartford. And a total of six hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in new county municipal and tax district revenues annually. Once the Envision twenty twenty five job and capital investment goals are achieved. Also, we have obtained one hundred percent pledged participation by the Foundation Board members. That is in addition to the sixty thousand that was pledged in the third quarter of twenty nineteen. And that brings for the moment, the total investment in the Envision twenty twenty five campaign to over two hundred thousand dollars by the business sector. So pending city council approval, discussion and approval of the work plan that has been submitted and your potential participation in funding the Envision twenty twenty five campaign. We're ready to go to the private sector to achieve the campaign goal. I'll just turn comments over to Justin Ike, who's gonna discuss first the program of work that was included in the packet. Uh, Justin, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I don't have the, I've got the packet on my phone, but I'd be guess, you know, some bullet points is you know, to plan and develop an industrial park or commercial park, whatever word you wanna plug in there. To help attract new businesses or relocate existing if that's something that fits their needs. Also, you know, the to attract the new business and the resident, that's another bullet point. And then, I guess in no particular order, but qualities of life, whether that's adding on to the bike trail or you know, whatever there seems to be a need for at the time that we have have succeeded with our capital campaign.
That's right. So in total, there are seventeen specific action items in the program of work. Uh, it creates kind of a roadmap for an executive director to achieve what typically needs to be done at the economic development level um, over the life of such a program. And those seventeen action items are distributed over uh, the topics of interest that Justin has mentioned. And you should know that there was direct participation input by thirty five community members. Over half a dozen meetings that were conducted throughout the town, a different place, including at City Hall. And some of you participated in those meetings. So when we reference the quality of life items that are represented in the plan, there's a list of about twenty five, thirty five items that the community is interested in. Clearly, they will need to be matrixed and identified by priority and so forth by the new executive director for economic involvement. That said, Justin and I are open to any questions or comments that you have about that program of work. Um, because we'd certainly like to address, you know, any, any changes, modifications, or recommendations that you have from the council side.
The only question I have, Al, is if I read that right, the ask of the city is a five-year act, hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for a total of eight hundred thousand dollars over five years. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. So the next the plan is a is an ask of the city and we're ready to address that next, but we're saying that this is a two million dollar plan that needs to be funded by the public and the private sector. And the ideas is that uh, we have the plan, we have the financial approach to back it. And we hope to be about to hire an executive director to execute that plan. And so that's correct. There is an ask associated. But not before we have your consent that the plan is pointed in the right direction.
And I'm not I'm not against the plan and everything I looked at look looks good. And I talked to Travis about it a couple of days ago. And I'm I'm just curious where the eight hundred came from or where the one thirty a year came from or whether, I'm just curious how we landed on that number.
So.
It's actually one sixty. Just for clarification, if you take eight hundred divided by five, I think it's one sixty.
Yes, that's correct.
Is it? Okay, yeah, my bad. I thought it was one thirty, so.
So in the process of campaign development, um, as you know, Tom DiFiore and I visited the community last October. And in our conversations with city officials and business folks, we asked for indications as to what would be possible to do if we asked for a total commitment at the executive level to execute the plan uh, by the public sector and the private sector investing in that plan. And we suggested that it would be possible to do that major program of work that's in front of you and achieve some extraordinary dollar goals. Provided the investment is tantamount to the work that needed to be done and the results that you're seeking to achieve. And so that estimate by N C D S um, for which we got some validation by elected officials suggested to us that it would be an appropriate amount to ask. Uh, and it would certainly buttress the financial plan that's gonna back a very heavy approach to local economic development growth and a business vitality for Hartford.
Then it also represents about a sixty forty.
Does that answer your question?
Sixty percent private, forty percent public.
Correct. And the the direction over the last, I can confidently say, forty years um, in public, private investment and these kinds of initiatives has transitioned from being primarily public to being primarily private. And so when the private sector steps up and says, we can handle more than fifty percent of what needs doing because it's in the greater public interest. And we're very much interested in participating in a leading way, then yeah, you can expect the private sector to step up to at least sixty percent that they voiced for this initial effort. And it is recognized that the public sector investment is significant. We recognize that. But we're also saying with the early investment by the Foundation Board and by more than fifty percent participation by the public sector, that the will and the zeal to succeed and get her done is there. And so we're certainly respectful of uh, what's being asked of of the municipality. But we're also confident that the business sector is gonna pick up their piece of the action, both in terms of funding and in terms of leadership to guide the way.
Al, forgive me if I've missed a little bit of something here because there's quite a bit of content, obviously. But the one thing that that I think that I'm gonna speak for myself, but looking ahead to budgeting for two thousand twenty one, um, I did not see or maybe it's here and I just missed it. The point of if we did allocate a hundred and sixty K for five years, that that would be not contingent that that would be not contingent until we set the budget for 2021. Did I, is that where you're at? Is that fit your mold? I'll shut my mic.
I think it does. The approach, councilman, is that, and, and the projection can be just as difficult on the private sector side as on the public sector side. The approach is that the, the scope of the work and the scope of the financial to support that work is understood in a consensus kind of way. And that a pledge will seriously focus both the public and the private sector on sustaining that level of investment. So we recognize that the budgets are not in place, either the private or, or the public sectors. But there is confidence by the leadership in this community that that work is going to be done on an annual basis and be done in such a way as to recognize what the initial intent has been. And of course, along the way, as you consider the pledge each year, you're looking for results from the productivity of the executive director. And you're looking for results in job creation, capital investment in this community, as well as the, the, the roll-down effects of getting the jobs here, which means home sales, business productivity, those kinds of things. So yes, we recognize that budgeting is going to be a year-to-year revisit with the council by the executive director based on that person's production and results. Thank you. So with that, unless, Justin, you want to add anything to the conversation, we would ask council to proceed with your protocol for an adoption of the plan, except if you wish to add any modification to what's there, because we're certainly willing to take your direct input and put it into the plan so that it's up to date with, with your consensus thinking.
I don't have a lot to add, other than there has been a significant amount of thought and time invested into this capital campaign. It's been very good discussion with the entire board, with Al, and obviously with our previous director, Jesse. So it's not something that we just came up with over lunch one day. There's been a lot of thought process and there's been good feedback, as Al alluded to. And I guess that just puts us where we are right now.
Yeah, and I'd really have to say, before we get into the business part of this, this agenda item, I want to commend Al and HADF leadership, the board, for just a ton of fantastic work. I've, I've been able to attend a lot of their meetings and been able to see a lot of what's going on there. The plan that they're putting together, like Justin mentioned and like Alice said, is very, very well thought out. There's, there's a lot of detail in this and they have, they've really poured a lot of, a lot of heart and soul into everything that they've done with this. Given all the hurdles that, that get thrown out in front of them, they're, they're presenting this with, with a ton of vision for Hartford and a huge amount of confidence. And I, I support it completely. I think it's, I think it's been great work. They've done a really, really nice job with this.
Thank you, sir. And thanks to the board.
All right. I will. Turn me his comments. It's been a pleasure to work with the NCDS group and the board. The HADF currently has been very potential that this provides to our community.
So thank you. So I think from the board perspective, they're hoping you'll make a motion to adopt in full recognition that the plan is really a year-to-year plan that needs to be modified as needed as circumstances dictate. And you'll have an opportunity to do that with the executive director, once that person is, is in place.
I move to approve the HADF envisioned 2025 capital campaign. Pledge amount.
Okay, we can take the amount up in the same, same motion. Excuse me, sir, you have a comment?
No, no, I'm probably the same thing you are, Al. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, I've mentioned that the, we've passed resolution 2025 dash, 2020 dash three, which is, which indicates that we have organizational and fiduciary responsibilities on, both by the foundation and by the council. And so we have a plan. We have a very solid plan to attain funding for it. And with a, an executive director selection process underway, I would like to ask the council to consider a motion to adopt the program of work and an initiative to fund that program of work at a rate of $160,000 per year, beginning with the current year.
I move to approve that as presented by Al.
A little bit, hold on a minute. All right, because we had a motion, then we got a little discussion in between there. So I think what I'm going to do is let that, let that first motion just die from lack of a second. Unless I've got a second out there right away. And I just want to make sure it's nice and clean on here because we're going to be using this for, for a few years. So I believe, Al, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're looking for is a motion for an adoption of the, of the program of work. And then also an adoption of, of an approval of a pledge amount over those five years. So not to get too much into the details, but I just want to make sure this is pretty clear for, for everything we had going on.
That's correct, sir. That's.
First motion, no second. I, we're gonna look for another motion.
I think Travis made one.
I talked over him.
I rephrase. I move to, I'm gonna split this into two motions. I move to adopt the program of work as presented for envisioned 2025.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. I hear none. We'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Blanzer?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yes.
Ken?
I move to adopt a pledge of 800,000 divided over five years. Not fix that 160 for, per year, per se, but cumulative as our budget allows as a, as a municipality.
Second.
All right, discussion.
We need to add that that begins this year.
I would, I would suggest that because it would help bridge in the context that we would like our executive director to hit the ground running. And also because some of the pledges won't be solicited until third quarter, possibly fourth, meaning that the bridge would help fund the interim. I would also suggest that in a pledge confirmation that would come back to the city, once you have taken the formal action to, to go forward, would be as Travis has said, as operating budgets allow. I think that is a reasonable phrase to have in the pledge in recognition of the fact that you in fact will reconsider the budget allocation on an annual basis. That's also underway. I just stated that the intent is to fund it at the full monty.
If that's the case, then all he would really need to add to his motion is to begin payments this year.
Move to include an initial payment 2020, 60,000.
I'll still second for discussion. 160,000. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jeremy. I can't agree. I'm sorry. Am I stepping on somebody?
Yep. Hold on a minute there, Nelson. I just want to clarify that we've got a second for discussion on that from Monahan.
I think I already did, didn't I?
We got a second on the change there. So, yep. From Monahan. So go ahead, Nelson. What's your, what are your comments?
I'm sorry, I just, I just, I'm uncomfortable with cutting a check for, and I'm going to bring Teresa in here in a second, for 160K by year end. As I made the initial comments earlier, I wanted to make this a 2021 budgetary item. I just, for the sake of given our circumstance, that we're sitting here talking at a screen right now and not knowing what revenue we're going to be able to expect in the next two quarters. I think it'd be a little bit aggressive to, to be able to say, we're going to cut a, you know, a check for 160K by year end when in fact we probably should be looking at year 2021, January 2nd. Teresa, go ahead.
Well, you're right. It's not in the budget this year. So, you know, we've already set that and you can add it. But like Scott brought up, I mean, I don't know what our sales tax we're going to do. We have a projected amount for sales tax before this COVID hit and before a lot of businesses started shutting down. So I think that will affect our sales tax revenue. I know it'll affect sales tax. It may even possibly affect our real estate tax income just because people may not be able to pay their taxes, you know? So we are kind of unsure at this time of what our revenues are going to be this year. I probably feel more comfortable in September or, you know, when we're going over, I guess, the budget in August, we'll maybe have a better idea of where we're sitting financially and, and what we could, you know, pay out this year or, you know, better yet, to pay out next year.
I agree with you, Scott. And that's why my original motion didn't, I didn't title those funds directly to our 2020 budget. I know that there's some funding that needs to happen. And is there an amount comfortable with? Any amount that you'd be comfortable with this year in 2020?
If you ask me personally, no. I, right now, I just, Al, I'm, I'm on board with you 100%, but, you know, I, I, I just, I am like everyone else or a representative of the taxpayers and I really do not feel comfortable with allocating something that we don't know is going to be there, which would really make number one, Teresa's life very stressful. And, and I think, you know, if you could tell your, your contingents, your retail base that, that the, the city of Hartford's on board come January 1st of 2021 for $160,000, that'll hold a lot of weight. But until then, we have to budget accordingly. And, you know, what numbers I've seen, I just can't see that it's there in a comfortable manner to, to, you know, make that.
Would you entertain this thought? As we are hiring, interviewing to hire a economic development director, we've heard in previous years from our outgoing, our, our prior economic director that he had no budget. So it's hard to solicit certain businesses when you don't necessarily know, you know, what, what, what you can do in the course of a year because you don't have a budget. So that's where I would, I understand we don't have it in our budget for 2020. And the 160 is a big, is a big number. And again, it's, it's not one I felt entirely comfortable with initially. And that's why I went with the 800 over five years. So if we could come out of this meeting with, with a number, I think it helps the, the folks who, who are going out doing the asks to the businesses. It helps them have something to reference. And it has some teeth, so to speak. It gives our economic development director a base to start with here in, in 2020.
I'll, I'll just say my piece real quick. I, I understand where you're coming from, Scott. And, and then 160,000 is, is, that's kind of scary to me as well. And as far as I know, Teresa and Karen haven't found the money tree yet, but I, I do, I do agree with Travis and I, and I think Al would agree too, that if the city doesn't show some good faith with a monetary donation when they've already raised, what'd you say, Al, $220,000? I, I think that looks, it just looks a little suspect to me. So I, I guess my gut right now, I'd, I'd be comfortable cutting a $50,000 check tomorrow. But I don't know much. And then, you know, we can revisit that later on in the year. But I, I think we can easily absorb $50,000 this week just, just to show that we're going to get the skin in the game. So I guess that's, that's where I'm at.
Councilman, I agree. Yeah, sorry.
No, I, you know, I would, I know where you're at and I understand where everybody's coming from with this. I think that looking at this whole project, I, I think sometimes we have to take a step back and say, hey, you know what? Hold on. This is a, this is a five-year deal. We're looking at the whole scope of work here. And this is money that we as a city, without this, without this capital campaign, we as a city would have to come up with this the entire amount solely with some help from the Development Foundation if they weren't putting together a campaign like this. So to get the same benefits, right? So, you know, if they've got a 2.2 point some dollar, million dollar campaign out there, that, that campaign, that money that's coming forward is money that, that the public sector, that our group doesn't have to spend because they're getting pledges from somebody else. So I know, I know we're in a blip right now and it, and it might be a blip that lasts all of 2020. I understand that. But they're moving forward with confidence. I have a ton of confidence in this. I want to make sure that we, that we don't send the wrong message.
May I just, this is Levon. May I make a public comment?
Yes, go ahead.
My, my feeling is that, and my, and I know that I know that I know that if we don't show confidence in what we're doing as a city and we don't show confidence in who we are, that we started out at this point. And yes, we have a, more than a bump in the road. I'm not minimizing this at all. But here's the thing, if we buy into the fear factor, the paranoia, that everything else is going on with, with this whole thing, and we allow that to affect what we do as a city and as leaders, more than a city, but as leaders, then that does not show confidence on our part of what we started out to do. We hired these people to do this job. We are in it for the long haul. And any of you who own businesses know that there's always huge bumps in the road. But you gotta overcome it. You, you find a way, make a way. And I just believe that as leaders in the community, we have to continue to lead this community into growth and into the opportunities that will ensue after we get over all of this. after we get over all of this other stuff that's going on. And so I just want to put that out there that I believe that people are looking to us as leadership. And whether it's the council, whether it's people on the boards, whether it's community. I think they need to see confidence within us in who we are and what we represent and that we are not going to allow the fear factor to engulf us.
There may be point that I might suggest, which is that if we consider, I think the city's on a calendar budget. If it is, it could approach this by saying we'll have an executive director most likely say mid-year and commit to a fifty percent investment level for the remainder of calendar twenty twenty.
Good suggestion. All right. Where are we at? I want to make sure that I'm, I'm caught up here a little bit. We've got, we got a motion and a second out there. Can, can you reread that motion for us, Karen?
Yeah, this is what I have and correct me if I'm wrong. So on the money part of it, Travis made a motion to adopt pledge amount of eight hundred thousand over five years as budget allows. Then Nelson seconded that. And then Travis amended his motion saying with the initial payment starting in twenty twenty of a hundred and sixty thousand. And Monahan seconded that.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
So how do we feel about Al's comment about with the director coming on board that we would change our commitment for twenty twenty to eighty thousand?
I know I'd be much more on board with it. I'd be more comfortable with fifty as previously mentioned, but I certainly would not be on board with a hundred and sixty K between now and end of the year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Pat here, can I kind of comment on this too a little bit, piggybacking Shannon?
Yep, as long as we keep it, keep it short.
We'll be short. I, I agree, Shannon. We can't buy into the fear. We need to be optimistic, but I think as a citizen with everything going on and having spoken to Adam at Pizza Ranch, who says their franchise says they're looking at possibly losing a hundred stores out of a hundred and some stores across the nation. And he's hoping he's not one of them. How many, if that's the case for him, I wonder how many other businesses we could be losing here in Hartford if this thing really prolongs. That's my concern. How many people are going to go bankrupt? Whatever. I think we need to move cautiously optimistic and I think that's where the fifty or eighty thousand shows at and not a hundred and sixty. And it tells me as a citizen that you are moving forward, you're thinking forward, but you're being, you're being fiscally responsible with the finances that I'm paying you to the city. That's my two cents.
So if I rescind my my second motion. I rescind. And we leave the first motion as it stands for the eighty thousand over five years. We could vote on that. And then we could come back with a, another motion to designate some funds.
We just rescind the whole thing and start over with that.
Absolutely.
I just think it'd be.
We could call a vote two.
Before we do all this.
Start over.
Yes. Is it possible that we commit tonight to the eight hundred thousand over five years and give Teresa till next meeting to come up with what she thinks we can afford? And then vote on an amount to commit this year?
I think that's possible, but let's deal with the motion that's on the table. See if that's rescinded, which I believe will. And I, and that's an option for a motion, I guess I would say. Each of you have an option for a motion.
Move to rescind my motion, the two motion.
All right. Motion's rescinded. Now most of our revenue, let's just talk about that for a minute though. I mean, I think that the majority of our revenue is property tax generated and I understand there might be some risk there, but there's not significant risk there. I guess I want to say that before we move on. I I don't think we need to be com- so cautious. We just talked about getting a new maintainer here not that long ago. And it's a piece of equipment. This is a capital investment in, in moving forward with Hartford. I think we need to make sure that we keep our eye on the prize and make sure we know what we're going to be doing going forward. No matter what the things that have been discussed, whether it's what Brenneman discussed, what Al has discussed or your Keel has discussed. They're not, we're not talking about dollar amounts that, that are going to push the city over or make us, put us in a bad spot. We have several other decisions in front of us this year that we can easily do or not do that we've budgeted for. So I want you to keep that in mind. It's I don't know. I, I don't like the, the complete pause discussion that's been going on with all of this. Yep, we've got a pandemic going on and it's, it's more than a bump in the road, but our job is not to deal with the day to day. Our job is to put Hartford in a better place five years from now. So I'll just leave it at that.
I'm going to come back to my original motion to get it out there for the council to vote on, and that is make the motion that the city of Hartford pledges the eight hundred over the five years. I move to call the vote.
All right. Let's vote. We've got Nelson.
No.
Glanzer.
Yes.
Keel.
Upstain.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Monahan.
You saved me for last on purpose?
Nope.
Yes.
All right. All right, do we have any further motions?
I move that the city allocate fifty thousand dollars to the twenty twenty five project.
Payable in twenty twenty?
Able in twenty twenty.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Read it back.
The city will allocate fifty thousand to the twenty twenty five envisioned campaign payable in twenty twenty.
All right, any other discussion?
Just a question later on, we can add more to it in twenty twenty if we do a vote again, correct?
I, I honestly just want to show some good faith in, in Teresa. Because honestly, Jeremy, I can't remember what we budgeted for and what we didn't right now. So fifty thousand dollars, I think, I think we can cover regardless of what we budgeted for. And, and when we review the budget and review the numbers and see what the third and fourth quarter are going to look like, we can, we can certainly add to it.
Yeah, I hear you. Don't, I get you. All right. Any other discussion? All right, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Upstain.
And Glanzer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right.
Would it, would it be appropriate to request that we get this back on the agenda? The first meeting after the second quarter, the first meeting after the third quarter? Just so we can review those numbers?
I think that's good timing. Yep.
All right. Thanks.
Yep, you bet. Sorry about that, I was on mute. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, everyone there. All right, we'll move on to new business. We've got, next on the agenda is hiring a full-time public works, works assistant, Alan Brown.
I guess with this, we're looking, I made the offer to him that the city hire him as full-time public works assistant for the seventeen fifty an hour. And so I'm looking for a formal motion and action to approve that.
So move. Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, we'll vote. Keel? Keel?
Yes.
All right, Brenneman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Glanzer?
Yes.
All right. All right, and we've also got the review, reviewing the tax abatement on parcel six oh six six two.
Make a motion to approve the tax abatement.
Second.
Discussion? All right, we'll vote. Glanzer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
And Keel?
Yes.
All right, move down to our last agenda item, which is the COVID nineteen update and discussion. Teresa has several, several things in our packet here, just kind of some updates on what's been going on and what we're looking at here. And we got some room for discussion.
Yeah, so with the COVID nineteen pandemic going on, as you guys all are aware of, you know, the, the governor has passed an executive order that specifically has wording directed at municipalities that we basically need to do our part to take care of and control, you know, the welfare and the public health of our citizens. So with the summer approaching and different things coming up, you know, it changes day by day, but I want to get the council's input on the items that I have put in the packet as far as what the city's going to do with our programs coming up in our facilities. So just looking at the first one, the parks and looking at that, you know, the restrooms there are set to be open now that the weather is getting nicer. Are we going to open them or do we not open them just to kind of shy them away from, you know, public using them and doing the community spread? We also put portable restrooms up at the sports complex. At this time, I don't believe there's any sports being played in, up there. The soccer isn't going on, the ball isn't going on. So I think at this time, we don't put any up there and we just, you know, once everything starts, once it starts getting used again, we can look at, at that time. And then the last thing as far as the parks is, is the playgrounds. You know, Sioux Falls is closed there. I don't know if we need to go to that extreme, but just wondering if we should throw out least signage there, letting the public know that we're not sanitizing them, just to let them know the city's not sanitizing them or like I said, even the shelters or the benches, just to basically maybe put a little bit of liability off the city that way. I guess let's probably just talk about the parks and get your input and thoughts on those items.
I'll chime in because I had a feeling you'd ask that, Teresa. I, after, I was sitting at my desk from five thirty to six thirty this evening, kind of did a little head count, okay? I had no time with her, no more than ten kids at the facility at any time. But obviously that'll change. But I do feel that this, as far as the park bathroom goes, that it'd be best that we shut that down with signage, of course. That states the reason why.
Yeah, I'd support that too. I think the, I don't think there's a need to open the bathrooms at this point. I think as long as there's some signage up there for that. I'm a little curious on the park equipment, you know, what that signage could look like if we were to do that. I think that it, I mean, I don't want it to be something that's, that's alarming that says this equipment is not sanitized, but looking for suggestions on what, what you have in mind there. For instance, maybe just offering personal tips for people as they're using it or something on those lines.
Maybe we could put basically following the guidelines of the CDC that playgrounds and park equipment will remain closed at this time or something on that lines.
Are we suggesting that it's closed though?
Well, for sure, the bathrooms and stuff like that, we could do something with that on them. I don't suggest we close the bathrooms or this, or that, close the park, the facilities at this time. But I do suggest that we close the bathroom.
So we're told over and over again that the best prevention is to wash our hands and then we take that away from our citizens.
Good point. Any chance you have a receptacle somewhere, Craig, that would be sit in the middle of the playground that would sanitize hands? Nothing that would last. I know a lot of the cities throughout the states have all shut their bathrooms down. Rapid City did bring some portables in, which they do have the dispensers on the inside of them. As far as trying to, I think trying to keep bathrooms open at this time and trying to keep them sanitized would be a nightmare.
I don't disagree with you, Craig. I'm just just throwing out here.
Sleep.
The, do we create more harm than good?
I, I'm curious, I'm curious about the resistance to close the parks. The law enforcement center is exactly sixteen miles to Hartford. So the center of downtown is Sioux Falls. What is, why, why is there a resistance when all the cities around us are closing the parks to, to do the same? I'm just curious. I'm not saying. I'm just curious, I'm not saying I have my personal opinions, but I'm asking the board, kind of, what is the resistance? Can you, you know, expound on that, because I've seen other cities definitely put ordinances in place reinforcing the governor's executive order. And I've seen Sioux Falls put, put initiatives in place to close the parks. And, and I may have missed it, but I don't know that all the cities in this area have closed their parks per se. Is that, is that what you're saying, Derek? About Sioux Falls, and I believe Brandon has done the same. And I'm not talking about making new laws to keep people out of the parks. Because you have, as a city, the, the latitude to close your parks at will, right? You don't have to pass an ordinance for that. I'm just asking for short term, until we reach the, the, the peak, or when we start to descend with cases as a region, what's the harm?
Ryan, I have a question for you. Do you feel that since Sioux Falls, and you mentioned Brandon, have closed parks, do you feel that we would have some type of infiltration? That suddenly we'd find a miniature woodstock in my backyard with teenagers realizing that the park is open and this place for them to congregate?
I don't know. I mean, we haven't been here before. But again, sixteen miles from the center of Sioux Falls, it's not far. So what, what is gonna stop, you know, that we're, we're, I don't think we've talked about it tonight, closing, not, not opening the pool. And now kids are gonna be kids, kids are gonna, our own kids are gonna get out and probably be kids. And we're already gonna have our own issues with that. Now, if other cities have their parks closed, what's gonna stop them from, from coming out here?
Okay, so your advice in regards to, because once again, as you well know, I live across the street from the park and I see it every day and I saw it tonight. That age area, age twelve to eighteen, okay? Is, is a popular spot for said individuals. I would think that it would be a constant five-minute drive-by in order to try to keep this, this per se ordinance in effect. Because it's, 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 it is one of their congregating spots that some good, some bad. And, and so, you know, I'm, I'm, I understand what you're saying. But I also kind of want to bring in the quality of life thing here, that, that we're not, you know, saying all gloom and doom.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying we're all gloom and doom at all, I'm just saying that I think as a city, it sets a standard. Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. I do think that there's a, there's a layer and a level to which we, which we approach things, and I think because we have yet to approach making the governor's executive order an ordinance. I think to jump forward and close parks, I feel is, is out of the normal line of how we would do things. I feel like that falls more in line with a with a, a safer at home, a stay-at-home, or any of those type, type of orders. And, and to answer your question, what would stop people from coming out here to use those parks, that's, that's their parents. I mean, the kids on these parks, I'm not, I, I know you're gonna mention teenagers. Teenagers are gonna do what teenagers do, and, but the, the people we're talking about using these parks are, are the parents, and I just feel like starting with, with parks, and not starting with, with an ordinance that reinforces the governor's executive order, is it's, first of all, it's the wrong order to do it, in my opinion. I believe that it's still, I think it sends the wrong message, because I think it's still safe for people, that we want people to be out on the bike path, we want them to take a walk, we want them to get outside. They need fresh air, they need to stay healthy. But they need to be smart about it, and I'm afraid starting with closing the parks before we do other things sends, sends a message that's confusing and, and wrong, in my opinion.
Would be the added expense if we had our new public works assistant, for example, hit, hit the bathrooms three or four times over the course of a day. Maybe, maybe that's too many. Noon and at the end of the day, twice a day. In my opinion, you don't put yourself at any more risk of using that restroom than you do of going to Walmart or Hy-Vee. People are taking the precautions when they're going to those public places. And I believe that they would take the same precautions if they're gonna use the restroom at the city park.
I have Brandon's ordinance, and I don't see anything about the parks. Maybe I'm missing it.
I, I just want to say my piece. I, I'm not a big fan of, especially what we're gonna talk about after the parks. But if we don't know what the scariest place in this town is by now, it, it's not the park. And it's not a bar. It's a spot off the interstate where people from out of town stop. And you don't know if those people are from Chicago, Detroit. You don't know where they're from. And in my opinion, that's the scariest spot in town. And that place is gonna remain open twenty-four hours a day. And there's still gonna be people going there, and there's still gonna be people taking precautions. And we can beat this dead horse all night about public restrooms and whether they're open or closed. But I'll take my chances in a bar in Hartford or at the park in Hartford compared to where I gotta go every day.
That's true, but that facility also is privately owned, they're cleaning it, they're doing precautions and stuff like that. If we're talking about the city parks, which is what we have control over, and public restrooms, we as a city would have to be take responsibility, just like the, the tub and, and keeping it clean and, and as, as safe as we can for customers or, or citizens, however you want to look at it. So to keep ours open, you'd have to constantly be cleaning it, constantly be cleaning it, because somebody might have been at the place you're afraid of caught something and then went for a walk in the city park and then transmitted it to the park. Where then, five other people come and might catch it. It's a risk either way, but we can't control the risk enough, in my opinion, to warrant having restrooms open. Playground equipment, stuff like that, probably shouldn't, because then that's really up to the parents, I mean. I don't go to the gym because I don't know who touched all that stuff before, you know? But that was a choice I made. People still go to the gym, but that's a choice they're making. But we don't have control of the gyms. I think we have to look at what we can control and what we can't control.
But just to play devil's advocate, why is, why can we not assume responsibility for cleaning the playground equipment, but we, you know what I mean, why, why do you separate the restroom from the playground equipment? Because we have control over both. So if you're, if you're gonna close the bathroom and leave the playground equipment open, what message does that sound? I, I think you either leave everything open and clean it, or you close everything and be done with it.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to closing the playground equipment. Because just like the bathrooms, we can't keep up with the maintenance to keep them sanity, sanitized.
Back to Jeremy's point. And sort of specifically making a ruling on the city park is out of order, so to speak, as Jeremy mentioned. In my opinion, as well.
What if, okay, looking at this, looking at what Teresa's got laid out here. And there's, there's several items on this, so we have plenty to go over. Restrooms, I guess where I'm at on that one, I would say unless we can commit to cleaning them on a very regular basis, I'd say let's close them. Portable restrooms up at the sports complex, soccer ball, all that kind of, everything that's going on up there is closed. I think we, we can, we, we don't put any up there unless we know of activities that are back on. And at that point, if there's activities back on, I think that's what we need to address up there. If there's no restrooms, I just, I don't think we need them up there at this point. Let's circle back to the playground piece of it. Jumping down here a little bit, Teresa. Summer activity programs, the swimming pool, park and rec program. At this point, some of those things, I mean, the park and rec program looks like that would be going on in June. It doesn't look very likely at this point that we're gonna be outside of this, this pandemic at that point. And the swimming pool, typically we would be getting ready to hire people and getting ready to move on that right now. I'd say with some of those, we push, we push summer rec and swimming pool back to be discussed again in, I'd push it back to June to even discuss a possible July anything. I mean, at this point, I don't think we, we want anything happening there in May and, and and April. And we look at this and we just push those back and say, hey, those are, those are indefinitely off until we revisit those in June. That's my opinion, late June. So that we know what we're looking at for the rest of the summer. Do you, on some of these, Teresa, now just kind of jumping down, water and sewer utilities, I'm very much in favor of stopping any shut-offs of any public utilities. Until probably that same time, maybe we put sixty days on all of these kind of things and say, hey, you know what, we're not gonna shut off any water utilities, anything like that for the next sixty days, until we revisit it again, and also be in favor of waiving any late fees between now and then. Do you need a motion for all of these, or do you need general direction?
Right now, I think I just need general direction of, of what to do. I would probably, you know, for the summer activities, like the pool and the park rec, you know, if the rest of the council's good with that, I, I'm fine with, you know, pushing it off and we'll discuss again in June for hopefully maybe doing something in July, you know, I, I can convey that to, you know, employees or potential employees. The water and sewer, the utilities, if you guys want to do something like no shut-offs and, and no late fees for a set amount of time, probably should have a motion for that, because that is in ordinance that these things will happen, so probably that would need a motion.
Can we leave the parks open and limit the amount of people that gather? Or is that too much?
I mean, we could put the, like, Jeremy-
That's already the state's direction, isn't it?
Right. I mean, so, I mean, if we want to try to, they're supposed to not be gatherings of more than ten people at a time, right? So can we leave the parks open, leave the bike trails open, but limit the amount of people that gather, but how do we enforce that? How are they enforcing that, deputy? In Sioux Falls?
Well, we're, we're really just giving recommendations. I mean, I don't know anybody that's rating out signs yet, are they? They're threatening to, and it gives them some power to once they get to that point, but it's really us as a city leader saying, hey, stay home, stay off the equipment, be smart. You know? So that's what we can control. So saying stay off the playground equipment, if you say that and post that, will they follow it? They might, they might not, but they're there after hours when the parks close too, so. I think we need to set the example, limit the gatherings in the parks. But to tell somebody they can't walk through the park or something like that, that's a little extreme perhaps. But I think saying the playgrounds are closed and the restrooms are closed, I think is smart. And, and I'll also say I'm in favor of, you know, the forgiveness on the water and sewer and working with our citizens on that.
Yeah, as far as the, the, the playgrounds and whatnot, it could be, you know, going back to maybe just signage, and I think Jeremy suggested this in the beginning, is here are the CDC guidelines that, yeah, you're not supposed to be more than ten out there and da-da-da-da-da, and just putting that in our signage. I, I don't think you'd be ever able to actually monitor all the time and control it. I mean, you hope people then take heed to that and, and just like they're supposed to self-regulate, you know?
Wait till you guys are sixty-five and you gotta stay home for three weeks. Speaking as the only one on this deal that's sixty-five.
Alright, let's clear up some, some of the easy stuff here, right? Do we have a motion on water bills?
Make a motion that we waive-
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go.
I make a motion that we waive all late fees on city utilities for sixty days to be revisited. And also suspend any utility shut-offs for sixty days to be revisited.
Second.
Alright, discussion. Here, none. We're gonna vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Alright. Alright. Any direction, it doesn't have to be a motion, but let's just give, let's be crystal clear on the direction on the swimming pool. And when we're gonna revisit that, as long as the, and as well as the summer rec program.
I'd say we look at-
I think.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I think we need to delay it all. This thing changes daily, weekly, monthly, so. I, I'll tell you the truth, I guess with that said, we don't know if we should delay. I mean, we got another month before the swimming pool plan to open and park and rec. I think you just assume there's gonna be delays, but who knows, we gotta put something in place right now.
You know, I'm wrong, but doesn't the, the park and rec is, it begins in, in like June and ends in like mid-July, is that correct?
No, it, it's just the month of June. It'll start the first- No, it, it's just the month of June. It'll start the first Monday in June and go till the end of June, so for that one month.
So would it be possible to treat this like the baseball season and delay it? And, and then we kind of take it as we go and instead of starting park and rec in June, starting in July, or maybe is late July or even August?
I think we could look at doing the month of July. Our director is Laura Johnson. I think she probably wouldn't want to go into August because she'll be preparing for school coming up. Hopefully, we'll be preparing for school coming up. So I'm definitely could talk to her about if there's any issues with you know, the July timeframe.
Okay, so that's, that's my consensus is to treat it like the baseball season and kind of delay things a little bit and if a month from now, we're sitting in the same scenario that we acted.
So do you think this would be a fair statement? You know, we have people applying for both the pool and the park rec, so as we get applications in and I'm reviewing it, could it be just a, you know, we can revisit this, but can it be a fair statement to continue on with that process saying, you know, at this point, we are looking at delaying both the pool and the park rec programs until July, just so they, they know that, anybody that we've possibly hired?
I just got done doing that today and I didn't get any guff as far as the consensus not from the people I work with. And so it seemed like a kind of a general South Dakotan consensus that, that, that's kind of the way a lot of people are thinking at this point in time.
You know, I think Teresa, I think to me, if I were to say for any of the applicants we got for the pool right now, say we're we're definitely not opening the pool and we're going to revisit this again in June. I don't know if I'd say first meeting, second meeting, but we'd revisit this again in June to see where we're going to be at for the rest of the summer. That gives us, that's, that's almost sixty days out. We're going to have a good idea of what we want to do at that point, and it still gives you enough time to be able to, to hire people for July start if we were revisiting in Jul- in June at that point.
Okay. Just so I know some direction of, you know, as I move on with the hiring and give them some ideal of when we'll discuss this again.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm not hearing major dissent on that, so I think we move forward with that part for the pool. And park rec, I would give you the discretion to talk with the park rec director, like with Laura, and just say it's not going to happen in June, so what do you think? And, and report back to the council. I mean, I really think with that one. We know it's not going to happen in June. There's a good chance it's not going to happen in July, and if it's not going to happen in those two months. I think with the two of you talk through that. You can come to a consent, you know, come to a decision as to whether it's going to happen at all this summer.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk with Laura on that and then we'll report back at our next meeting.
Okay. You and I did talk about, we do have a pool manager, Amy. And she's basically you know, just, we talked to her, we've hired her for the year. I would like to give you some open discretion to be able to utilize her in certain ways as you see fit to, to help around with other things in the city, whether it's some things at City Hall, if she's, you know, if she can help out with some of those kind of other items and other duties that you have available. So unless anybody has any, any qualm with that, I think it'd be, I think it'd be the right thing to do for Amy, but I also think that it's a good chance for us to be able to catch up on a few things that we've got backlogged out there.
Yeah, and I think, like I said, we do have Amy already hired. If I would postpone opening the pool, say we would till July or whatnot. You know, I don't know if she'll go look for another job, you know, because that is income for her in the summer, so I would hate to be in a position where she finds something else and moves on. And then we decide we're going to open the pool in July and then we have nobody to run it or manage it. So, you know, I'd, I'd like to keep her on and we could definitely keep her busy in the office for this, this interim month here, you know. Maybe let her come help out in, in June and then you know, by the time June comes, we'll have a better ideal of whether we're going to open the pool or, or not too.
Anybody have issue with that? Okay, let's move forward with that.
Okay.
All right. Restrooms in the park is probably all that we've left out there at this point, as far as that piece of it goes. We got, we've got different opinions around on this. I'd entertain a motion. Somebody's got a motion out there whether to do something or not do something. I think this is, this is the right time to just dial in and say, hey, this is what we should do.
Make a motion to close the park pools until further notice.
Say that again, Nelson, did you say the park?
I'm sorry, I said, I said park pool, didn't I? I meant say, I meant to make a motion to close the park bathrooms until further notice.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Other discussion. Now we'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
No.
Okay, Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Okay, and Monahan?
No.
Do we have a tie? All right. I would also, I would I'm going to fall on the side of closing the park bathrooms at this time. I understand that, I understand Keel's comment earlier about, hey, that's the one place where we can wash hands and that's the one place where we can do all of that. I also think there's, there's a plenty of personal responsibility that's involved with this. As far as if you want to take the risk, depending on what we decide to do with the parks next. If you want to take the risk of doing that. You're taking hand sanitizer with you. So at this point, I don't know that we can, we can keep those bathrooms as clean as we think we need to. So I'm, I'm going to fall inside of closing those. All right, do we have any motions on the parks?
Motion to keep the parks open as is with signage, make sure that we underline with signage. You know, making them aware of the gubernatorial scenario in a short synopsis.
Okay, you have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Now.
Craig, can we actually get? No, I got a comment. Craig, can we actually get metal signs made or something that can be posted that holds up? F signs or something like that, can be that.
Metal ones might be tough. I could put a rush on some and see if we can't get something coming through Lyle signs. Otherwise, we do have some metal signs with weights on that we could, for, you know, put something in right away and slip inside of sleeves and tape them on. They'll, you know, hold up for a while, but I can push on some metal signs.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman? I'm sorry. No, okay, no. Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Teresa, does that tackle your list of what we have there so far?
Yeah, I think that gives me a good direction on how we can proceed forward and until we discuss again, so, yep.
Yeah.
I've got a question, Jeremy. The batting cages, soccer nets, dragging the ball fields. Keep them going like we normally do and just have signs that please, please use the guidelines on them?
I'd say so. I mean, if a family wants to go out there and play, play softball or something like that, I don't think that that's a, that's such a bad thing. I think if we start to see organized practice out there with more than ten people, that's a whole different thing.
Maybe what we'll do at the soccer net center is maybe just put up like half the nets and just stagger them throughout the soccer fields with no uniformed pattern to them, something like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. Anybody else? Any, anybody opposed to that?
I support that as well. I think it specifically the ball diamonds, I think it's easier to keep them in shape than to get them in shape.
Yep.
Good point, yeah.
And we kind of want to try out our new toy.
Right? All right. Couple other updates. I don't want to, I don't want to hang this out there too long because I know everybody's been putting a lot and we've got plenty more to discuss yet. When it comes to this, but I do want to just give updates. If you weren't aware, we are, we do have a COVID nineteen task force here in Hartford that meets every Friday. Right now on that, we've got, got me and Teresa, Jones, Travis Keel. We also have some representation from Sanford Health, Deputy Ryan from Minnehaw County. I'm probably going to miss people as I go through it, but we've got some essential services like San, like Sunshine Foods. We've got representation from the churches. We've also got Gabby on there from Hartford Chamber, and it's really just a, a weekly meeting to go through and talk a little bit about what are we seeing out there? Where are the, where do we need resources? What do people need? And what's happening? So not going to dive into that too far, except for Teresa and Karen have put up a resource page on the Hartford City website listing out all the different kinds of resources that are available in our area and and we're going to continue to regularly link to those in a Facebook page that we've got out there. Basically, it's the Hartford Area COVID nineteen Resource Center. And we're going to continue to post on that resource center and make sure that people that need resources are set up with people that have resources or can donate and do some more things out there, so. Just want to make you aware of that. If you've got more questions about that, absolutely ask offline. Anything like that, we're, the more the merrier. We just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can do to keep people informed and know what resources are available to them, whether they're a citizen or a small business or anything like that. So there's a ton of information and there's a lot to sift through, so. Teresa and Karen, it's fantastic what you guys have done with that resource page out there, getting that posted on the city website. If anybody hasn't had a chance to take a look at that, look at that, it's, there's a lot of information out there already, so no, we're doing a good job on, on that front. Next discussion I would like to have is that is going into looking at what we need to do to put an ordinance in place to be able to execute on the governor's executive order. As I pointed out to, to all of you, nearly every area community has put something in place, whether it's an ordinance or a resolution. Mostly ordinances is what we're seeing out there. A lot of those second readings for councils were last night, so we'd have to go through and see what some of those meeting minutes were. We're seeing a ton of solidarity in the area. You name a city and I can tell you probably what they've got in place as far as making sure that they've got something behind their community saying that, you know what, we not only support the executive order that's out there, we we're going to put it into ordinance for the time being. They don't have an ordinance forever. They seen a couple of different things out there. Dell Rapids had theirs with a deadline of April twentieth, and then they would have to look at revisiting that ordinance after that point. City of Brandon had an ordinance out there that basically said, we're going to revisit this at every public meeting. And, and basically pull it back when we see fit. Aresburg had some revisions to theirs. You can tell some of them had a first reading and then they had a second first reading with a new ordinance in place, so. Want to, want to talk about that? I can, I can tell you, most of those cities, I've talked to several of them, did not put it in place because they felt they had to enforce it. It was put in place because they felt, gosh, you know what, our, our business community is doing what they need to do. But we need to show as a community that, that we are in lockstep with what's going on, and it's a good idea for us to have this public health ordinance in place to make sure that, that we've done the things we need to do to be responsible leaders of our community. I did not speak to one community that put it in place to say, yeah, we put it out there so we could get that guy to stop doing what he's doing. I haven't heard that yet. It's more of a we're showing the guidelines and we're showing leadership in this issue, and this is this is a public health emergency in this case. And if you read South Dakota codified law, like I pointed out to most of you, that responsibility at this point falls in the hands of the municipalities. There might be a lot of finger pointing back to the state and to the governor, but to be honest, the way the South Dakota law is written, it's up to the municipalities to decide what, what they want to allow, so. Want to have a discussion about that for a little bit, and some of this. Yeah, anyway, I'm kind of go from there. I don't know if we have Larry on the phone right now for some of this, but just want to have.
I've been here. I'm here, Mayor.
All right, Larry, good. We might have questions specifically about, about what you're seeing out there, but I'm going to open it up for council, council discussion at this point.
So with all the executive orders out there and the newest executive order from the governor that specifically addresses Minnehawha and Lincoln County. What do we need to? I mean, there's getting to be some layers on this thing. Just curious.
You know, that's a good point. I think at this point, most of the discussion has been about the original executive order. I'd be a little hard pressed to say, let's put an ordinance in place that, that forces you to stay in your house with this. The second executive discussion was not as much of an order, order as it was a suggestion, I believe. I, I need to look through that here a minute. Jones, is that what you're getting at?
I don't think it's a suggestion, I'm just guessing.
Monahan, it looked like you wanted to say something here a minute ago.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because I, I read, I believe it was Dell Rapids and Brandon's what they enacted and to be quite honest with you, I, I hate the thought that we have to do this. I, I understand why we're talking about it and I understand why we need to do it. But I think when we. why we need to do it, but I think when we do it, I think it needs to be as minimalistic as possible. And, and by that, I mean, really just regurgitate the CDC guidelines and what's coming out of the state and the Fed to whatever extent it is and then just really, I, I think the only thing we need to touch on is the, is the 10 people. Because everybody else in town's complying without this ordinance. So I think if we just touch on the 10 people, you know, and the CDC guidelines and just keep it short and sweet, I think we'll be covered, but that's just, that's just my thought. I, I don't want to, I don't want to see us get really far out in the weeds on this thing. So.
No, you know what? I would, I understand where you're coming from there, Monahan, and I think that, uh, some of the communities that have tried to stray away from the general direction from the state, I, I think that's where they've gotten hung up, to be honest with you. I think, I think simple and direct is, is a good piece of it. Um, once we start to think through and, and create our own formula, um, is where we start to venture into waters that I don't know that we're comfortable with, in my opinion. If I've got no other council discussion, I do want to, um, have Larry chime in on what you've seen in the area. Um, what's working, what's not working as far as what councils are doing.
Okay, I've, I've seen, um, three basic approaches to this. And the, the first approach is what I'm going to call the, the Rapid City or the, the Huron Approach where they passed an ordinance and they said it was effective immediately. Uh, they used the term social distancing and closed retail business to be, you know, bars and restaurants and athletic clubs, that sort of stuff. And, and they said it was effective immediately and they did it under their emergency power. There's some question about how long you have to have to enact an ordinance. And I think you have to have a first reading and second reading, as you mentioned today, Mayor. And, and then I think it becomes effective upon second reading and publication and has to have an emergency clause on it. Canton got in the position where it started out with the Rapid City, um, model to get going on it. It made a major amendment and there's an ordinance that says if you make a major amendment on the second reading, you have to wait an additional five days. And, and we went from doing the Rapid City model to what I'm going to call the Dell Rapids model, um, or the Sioux, or the Sioux Falls model. Yeah, if you've followed the, the mayor, not the mayors, but the governor's executive, uh, orders, they've got, uh, contingent, continually more severe or more stringent. Um, and I, I anticipate that she'll continue to do that. Uh, we now have the, the mayor of Sioux Falls talking about, uh, if we have to, we're, uh, we're going to do a stay at home ordinance and tell people to stay at home. Uh, Arvid was talking earlier about the governors told us by the terms of Shell, if we live in these two counties to, to stay at home. And so Arvid and I are staying at home. And you all know the reason, uh, by or behind that type ordinance and that's to try to, to stop the flow and the spread and, and let the thing, uh, come through in a manner that we can handle it and that doesn't mimic what is happening in, in, in Rapid City. Now, excuse me, not Rapid City, but in New York City. Um, and, uh, the, what is happening with this virus, it's, it's real. It's killing people. We haven't find a cure for it. And social distancing, you know, appears to work to slow the thing down. Um, Rapid City, uh, isn't as severe as, as, uh, uh, Sioux Falls is. And, and I, and I'd like to tell you the reason is, is because they had a, a more severe, uh, ordinance, but I don't, I don't think that's true. But maybe there's something behind that. I just don't know. It just, it's not as hot a spot as, as, as Sioux Falls is. Um, you have, uh, you have in, in most cities, um, voluntary compliance where merchants have said, we're not going to stay open. Um, because of the risk involved, we don't expose our employees. And the other part of it is, is there's people like me that just are, are not going to go out. I'm, I'm not going to go out and sit in a place and, and have a pizza when I can pick something up. Uh, on the other side of it, um, when I said there are three models, the, the other model is, is that people don't do anything. Um, and, uh, you know, just, we don't think it's a problem. And up to this point in time, you folks haven't done anything. And, uh, the, the issue is, is are you going to get in step with the, at least what Sioux Falls has done to have something that you can amend? Uh, as you, uh, as need be, if you have to amend it. Um, let's point out Sioux Falls has decided to close parks. The City of Canton has decided to close parks. Uh, Beersford, um, since their home rule, they just closed everything down immediately. And by that, I mean, uh, what would fit within the, the definition of the enclosed, um, uh, retail business. And, and if you read through these ordinances, you know that there are a number of exceptions to them. The grocery store is exempt, takeout is exempt. Any of your businesses that you can have open, professional business or other businesses, as, as long as you're not, um, uh, getting over that, that 10-person cap. Um, and, and, you know, the other part of it is, is, and I think the governor is trying to keep retail businesses going because sales tax are, are would drive our state. And to be frank with you, every city that I've talked to, they've all talked about, well, man, we're going to be in a world of hurt, uh, this next quarter. And if things don't straighten out, we're doing it for two quarters, we're in more of a world of hurt. Um, so, uh, everybody's doing it. Uh, it's just a question of what they're doing. And I don't know if that answers your question, Mayor.
Mayor had to step away for a second.
No, all right.
I was just, I'll agree with Larry. I was just looking at the governor's latest, uh, uh, executive order. And when they changed the wording from, uh, should to shall.
That's right.
That's the, that's the word. And the one that she put in for Minnehaw and Lincoln County did change the word. The wording is all shall. So, I don't know if I got anything to add to that. It just.
Is it? Is our deputy still? Is the, is the deputies?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was trying to push the button.
Um, you know, my, my question is just on enforcement.
What's your question?
Well, um, you know, what Sioux Falls doing on enforcement, uh, what's Brandon doing on enforcement? They have the ordinances if, if, if we passed it, um, you know, what's going to happen from an enforcement perspective?
And that I don't know. Um, but I would know by our next COVID meeting. Which is Friday.
Okay.
And we probably need that time anyway for them because that maybe um, both of those cities are probably in a little bit of a, let's see what happens now that we've passed this mode. Um, but I can find out by Friday.
Do you know what Garrettson's done?
Do I know what Garrettson's done? I know they've passed, um, yeah, they put some teeth in their ordinance. I don't have it on me though. I, because I primarily don't work the east side of the county, so I don't, I didn't follow it all that closely. But I only did.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't know. And I can tell you all of the, I, I believe all of the cities in Lincoln County have. I'm not sure what Key has done. Nor am, am I sure what Hudson's done. But the other ones have. And, and, and they're, they're all the, the Sioux Falls model. One form or another.
You know, just to kind of follow up where, where I've been on this entire issue all the way through, um, is basically, most of the way through, I've been opposed to it. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily always believe that the government has to put an ordinance in place to have people do the right thing. And, and for, and I want to make sure that the spirit of that is still out there because, um, for the most part, our community has all done the right thing. People are handling their business the way they need to. They're doing all of those pieces. Um, but I believe we've gotten to a point to where we need to show as a community, just like our businesses have shown to the community, um, where we stand on this. And, um, you know, they put pieces in, in state law for municipalities to make a decision based on public health for a reason. There, I cannot think of another public health issue. Obviously, I mean, there's not been another public health issue like this since probably the Spanish flu. So, if now is when we choose not to do something on it, I, I find it a little strange. I, I think by putting an ordinance out there and putting something in place, it really is a little bit to showing our commitment to saying our community is doing the right thing and we support that. And this is the direction we want everybody to go. Um, I don't ever expect that we would have to enforce on this. But, um, you know, things have gotten strange every week as we go. And we don't know what they're going to look like three or four weeks down the road either. And, um, I'm, I'm more concerned with how we look as, as city leaders and how what direction we give the community if we don't put.
Hey, Mayor. Uh, Larry, Larry is correct. Garrettson or, or Deputy Ryan, one of the two that said it. Garrettson added a whole portion to theirs on, uh, fines and violations of the penalties at the end. Brandon doesn't have it. And the other one you sent us from Sioux Falls or whatever doesn't have that. Looks like they want to really whack some people.
Add insult, as they say.
What's that?
Add insult to injury, as they say.
Wow. Yeah. So, there's, there's appears to be, uh, if the words are more teeth, yeah, they got more teeth than theirs. Looks like. What are you looking to do, Mayor? Do you want somebody to make a motion?
If I remember correctly, I think Brandon's referred to a certain fine that resided in. You know, I think what we're looking for right now is general direction for Larry because, um, what, what are you interested in seeing? Completely different part.
Can, uh, first of all, is anybody else having a really hard time here in Jeremy?
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
Your, your audio, Jeremy, is really bad for some reason. But if I could make a suggestion, could we have Teresa and Larry and you, Jeremy, or whoever needs to be involved? And, and just put together a draft, a draft ordinance, email it out so we can look at it. Because we'll be here all night trying to piece something together piecemeal. But, and, and I, I don't know that it, we need to go down the road of putting fines and teeth and all that other in it. But just touch on the stuff we need to touch on and put that in ordinance form and present it to the council and tweak it from there. Whether we got to have another special meeting in two days or do this again in two days or whatever we need to do, but that, that's, that's just my opinion.
What, uh, what caught my eye, uh, on the governor's executive order was items 16 through 20. Bear with me a moment. That's basically the last paragraph. And it's, uh, headed by saying all local and municipal governments within the state of South Dakota should. And it goes through 16 through 20. And that seemed like a pretty, uh, um, effective way to at least get the ball rolling. Um, and it touches on the 10 and so on and so forth. Um, we could expand from there. Uh, but, but, um, that's what, what captured my attention to, you know, at least show some, show some initiative and, um, and, and, and cover the municipal part of the governor's executive order.
All right. Yeah, I'm with Mark as far as, uh, let's get an ordinance drafted up, have a look at it.
I agree. And I'm back in. I think, um, I think that's where I'm thinking.
Do you need a motion for that, Jeremy, or no?
It's not going to hurt.
And make a motion that we, uh, uh, instruct Teresa, Larry and Jeremy to put together a draft COVID-19 City of Hartford ordinance to send to the council for review.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. Monahan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right. Good, good. All right, with that, do we have anything else on COVID-19 update and discussion? All right, we're going to move down to correspondence. Don't believe we have any. Um, looking for a motion to move to executive session for legal and personnel.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
All right, we got to go through the votes. Nelson?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Keel? Yes. Brenneman? Brenneman?
Did we miss the abatement?
No, we did it.
We got it.
We did it.
Oh, I missed it then. All right, let's go to executive session. Yeah.
All right. And, uh, Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Yep, thanks for joining us.
Yep, thanks, guys. Have a good evening.
Teresa? Teresa? Is Teresa still on?
Yeah, go ahead, Larry.
Can I get off?
Um, can you stay on for just a couple of minutes?
Sure, sure. Then, then, then my, my other second question is, how do you know everybody else got off?
I can see who's on and who's off. So, I will ask everybody who's not a council member to disconnect now and, or I'll disconnect them.
Okay, good. That's the way they did it today and, and, uh, Okay, good. That's the way they did it today and, and.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion or a adjournment?
The move.
Second.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Lanzar?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yeah.
All right. Good stuff.